This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, uh, welcome everyone. I will call the continuation of the June 3rd board meeting. Is there anything we need to do?
No, again, I think the only item I would say is that it was a slightly revised agenda that one out. Part of the continuing meeting and I think that really all that was added, Chris or Georgia, correct me if I wrong, was the item, action item about the budget resolution.
Correct.
So that would be, I think the board would be appropriate to, first of all, allow Mr. Guy to participate fully, find the exceptional circumstances, that'd be the first motion.
Motion and second, all in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you. Next would be to approve a revised agenda by adding action item 4D like in David, which was the primary purpose of the continuing of the agenda of the meeting.
Motion second? And second, all in favor?
And Chris, are we going to have Stephen Blum on at some point in time?
Mr. Blum is online right now.
I'm glad he still exists. He seems like a ghost.
Okay, let's, unless there's any other items, we'll jump into 4A.
Chairman, what you may want to, only because the budget item was added, ask if there's any comments regarding agenda items.
So do we have any public comments regarding the addition of 4D to the agenda?
And Chris, do you have any by fax or chat or email?
No, I have not gotten any chats.
Okay, so we will start now with items, with item 4A, Public Works General Fund Budget Workshop.
I'm glad I had red in my outfit today.
Thursday's Red Day. All right, good afternoon. Brian Rashir, Public Works Manager. This is kind of our last meeting prior to this. I was told to kind of true up some numbers. We went back and did. Landscape mulch was added, as you're aware of, new contract. We did not put mulch because they were re-mulches a year, which is roughly about eighty, ninety thousand. I talked to staff and we feel like it should only done really once a year. So we even put enough to cover twice here if we have to. So we cut back on the contractual landscaping, but we did put fifty grand in there in case the mulch has to go down once a year. This will actually save us money in the long run. We don't have to do it more than once. And even Eric Lasko of Manscapes said, really, one time a year is all you need to do it. That's the pine straw up and down Gateway Boulevard in Griffin. A tree limb removal, our existing tree contract did not cover tree limbs. What this means is we have to take a tree out or anything big, always came out of our tree trimming services contract, which that's basically fifty-nine thousand just for that sixty grand. That didn't include any trees being removed. That's as a need basis only. So we put that thirty there to cover anything. We do have some trees that we're aware of that might need to come out due to street light issues. If that happens, that money's there for those to come out. A data logger maintenance, we put fifteen hundred there. That's new. Since our data loggers are thirteen years old, or not thirteen, but three years old now. We're going to need some new batteries. Those are all battery operator data loggers. So we're going to throw some extra money into there. The big one, stormwater video, we put fifty thousand. That's for basin four. I already got a quote back and we always get more than one quote, but it runs about forty-five to fifty thousand of video basin four. Your stormwater system repair and maintenance, a million dollars is a shocker. I'm aware of that. But after what we found out in Daniel's Preserve, we have six interconnects that are really, the inverts are three foot below the bottom of the pond. Olmonte is getting a pathometric study done for us on his inverts. We know exactly. We found the original as built in a pond. It's supposed to be a twenty feet deep. It went at twelve. The inverts are fifteen. Every time we clean them, they fill right back in. One in Volkswagen over it. That pipe is crushed. Five hundred and seventy units. Went to this pond. Right now this
Yeah, just shut them down.
So it's kind of crucial we get these lake interconnects done within the next year or two, because if you get another Irma, folks, the middle pond, which is seventy-eight, it doesn't flow very well to any of the other ponds, if any, being the fact the inverts are three foot below.
Well, they were probably three foot below during Irma, too.
They were, and you didn't flood, but I wasn't on that pond. I know, I live in Timber Ridge and Timber Ridge had two and a half foot of water down the street. I don't know what Daniel's
Well, my only point was I don't think it got any worse. Didn't get any better, but
We didn't know to what extent it was clogged.
Not until MRI, we found out the only way we could find the end of the pipes is with their vac con truck. They kept blowing until bubbles bubbled up and divers had to go down and find the bubbles and dig. He spent two days digging to find the end of one and find the top of the pipe is where we found huge boulders on it. Found out one of the bells was busted off. He pulled it up. If you don't know what the bell is, it's the end of the pipe. And it's nice forty-eight inch pipe, so. And sure enough, we cleaned the rest of them. We just went back to see and they're already starting to fill back in, which is going to happen when they're below.
Did I understand you to say that originally it was designed at twenty feet?
Correct. Supposed to be at twenty feet deep that pond. I talked to Rick Berlinski. He's been around here forever. He said, Brian, none of these ponds are deeper than twelve or thirteen feet. The only one it is would be the Spring Fed Lake over here by Flavius, which is probably at twenty, but the most of them, he said, they all hit that cap rock at about twelve. If you're not dynamiting, you're not getting
So I mean, just never functioned.
Never has.
How many years? Thirty years?
Fifteen. It's built in oh-six. Stormwater pipe and catch basin, we put five hundred thousand. Hundred thousand of that is just to finish basin five. Since we hit five was so big, we had to bust up in two different bids. We'll finish the first phase this year. The second phase will start October, November. So instead of doing four and three next year, we only decided we want to do basin four, and that should cover all this. Because like I'll say, the more stuff we're finding is just bigger dollars. We did find one manhole in Timber Ridge. The floor, water's coming up through the bottom of the manhole, which is not good. So what we have to do is build a false floor, which you can do. It doesn't cost, it's probably about five or ten grand to do that, but I have MRI give me a quote on that one. We ran the same problem over in Callaway Greens. If you remember, Mr. Tinko with the same problem. It's real simple. You just build a false floor to keep the water from coming up through it. But we're finding different things, folks. I mean, twenty-five years of neglecting some of these, it's adding up.
Excuse me. I was trying to follow along with the handout either on my screen or otherwise. That's why I'm not finding it. Thank you.
It's on oh-one.
I was only oh-one.
Yeah, today the agenda item for today was
Okay. You're jumping again.
Yes, sir.
I, thank you. I'd like to make a couple of comments here. First one being some of the intermediate totals on these sheets are incorrect. If you look on A1, for instance, item group one, landscape services. The difference between the proposed twenty-two budget of eight hundred and twenty-three thousand and the twenty-one projected of seven hundred and fourteen thousand, that's a difference of one hundred and nine thousand, not fifty-eight. And
Where are you at, Bill?
No, we're not following.
We're not following you. Where are you at?
I'm on page one.
Mine don't have any pages.
Landscape services.
Okay.
Are you with, are you with me now?
Yes.
Go to the total landscape services. The fiscal twenty-two budget, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand. Are you with me?
I know. Mine shows one million, three thousand.
Mine shows one, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Are you in the general fund?
I am.
I don't think you have the latest copy. It's one million, three.
How delightful with that.
Yeah, I mean, Bill, I think there was a little bit of confusion today. We were supposed to deep dive into the numbers on the next board meeting. Brian went ahead and and took some details. Just a little bit of confusion, so.
This is what we were supposed to discuss.
I think, I think there might be possibly, Mr. Guy, is our prior version of the budget. This is version one, which was emailed out when, last Monday?
Yesterday.
Yesterday?
Yesterday.
So, Mr. Guy, I don't know if you received an email yesterday, the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two proposed budget, version one?
Well, I had other things going on yesterday and apparently I missed that. And I guess I should apologize for it, but I'll not apologize for pointing out that the intermediate totals, as I showed you, between eight twenty-three and seven fourteen is a hundred and nine thousand, not fifty-eight. And on the second page, the total waterway management services that I'm showing of two million, seven twenty versus a million, one thirty is a million, five ninety-one, not a million, five fifteen. So apparently somebody has bought some of these things, hopefully. It will be adopting, will be adopting a high watermark budget that has at least mathematically correct figures in it. And also want to point out that the increases in this general fund budget amount to an increase over a hundred percent. Now, the last, the last few years, we've tried hard, hard, hard to keep our increases in the high single digits or thereabouts. And, and I understand what a high watermark budget is, but one that starts out at over a hundred percent is one that I don't think we even ought to spend any time with. I think we need to get a lot closer to where we're going to end up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bill. So I just want to make sure that we stay in the spirit of, of the agenda. I think what we should do, Brian, is if we hold, unless there's some items that you think is pertinent for us to briefly review today in preparation for us to go and deep dive in the next session, if there's items that have significant increases or things that you think we should spend some time diving deeper into. I do want to try to stay in the spirit of, of the agenda.
Your big ones, these are the big ones that I highlighted, were in yellow, where your like say the stormwater repair and maintenance, that's your big one. That's the million dollar one with almost five hundred thousand going to Daniel's Preserve.
Brian, our problem is, is on the budget proposed. We don't have it highlighted, so we have to
Okay.
go line item by line.
You go stormwater system repair and maintenance.
Mid bay day. That's the one that went to a million.
Correct.
You're just talking about the big bucks.
I'm going big ones.
Why don't, yeah, why don't, I think it might be pertinent as a follow-up to the meeting. Why don't you just send out the items?
I can do that.
That where there's, where there's significant changes for us to, the ones that are highlighted in your list.
Yeah, the big ones were that, we're adding aerators. That's the big one with the repair and maintenance and add an additional aerators on the capital because we're trying to add aerators.
Now, I would do everything and all the numbers checked.
Sidewalks, that was a big one.
Yeah, every one of them looked good to me, but I thought today, the whole purpose for this is to meet the June fifteenth requirement, is to set the bar at a number at which the assessment will not go any higher.
Correct. It's twofold. One is, and I would also request that next time a budget is prepared, that there be a date on the cover sheet, because there's no date on the one that I received. It just has version one. So I think that would be very helpful. And so what has to happen is that, and this was delivered to the board prior to June fifteenth, that's what's important. And the board has to adopt the resolution approving the budget solely for the purposes of setting the public hearing on August nineteenth, as indicated in the proposed resolution. The board then has the ability to workshop it during the course of all that and come down, you can't go any higher. You can't come down. And then if there was any increase over last year's operation and maintenance assessments, then we have the separately mailed notices to all the affected property owners and also the larger ad that has to be in the newspaper. So that's a byproduct of today.
Well, the thing that confused me was is that when this came out first, is this the initial document or is the initial document called version one? To me, this is amendment number one.
Well.
Because there was an original.
I had original. I was asked to go back and add true dollars to it.
So I think that Tony's point of having the date would help it. Because last year, remember, we went all the way up, I believe, to version five.
Right.
But I think this document has been called the proposed budget. I think the first time you all received it was this week, this entire document.
I think Ed's point, there's been a version one. It was edited, so we can call to see the version.
Yes. The original one we had. This really, in essence, is the original. It should have been the original, not version one.
So this is, what, what was just presented to us yesterday? Is that and what?
That's the proposed budget for the statute provided to by the district manager to be noted and proven.
For clarity, it's, this is version one.
Correct.
Okay.
Then the other one is, is that this, this is a result of what, what happens when we've kicked the can for twenty years. It's, it's ended. We can't do it anymore. Now, what we can do, there are a lot of things in here that, in my opinion, that if we come back with a, an alternative plan, it would be debt finance these things. We've got probably two or three million dollars worth of work here that can easily be debt financed for five years, low interest rates and scatter this cost out to where it's not an eighty-two percent hit this year. It may be a twenty, 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 or something like that, but at least it gets that off the table. I mean, why, this type of capital asset, paying for it one time, while, while I think we needed, Brian, what you've done to tell us what the real deal is, I think there's alternatives will allow us to soften the blow.
And I also think too, point of consideration is, this is, there is a, I think staff has done a multi-year plan on some of these items. It's what we have for twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. So keep in mind, the items that are in this budget, there will be additional items in next year's budget. So I think, you know, looking at potential debt financing options is definitely
We just stagger.
Yeah.
Stagger the debt.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, so we'll have to think about next year, because at some point, you've got to, you know, you have to be careful that you don't overextend yourself because you're stacking, you're accruing over multiple years. So, I mean, the things that we have to fix, we're not going to be able to fix them all this year, probably next year. It's probably a five-year plan in order to hit all of the, the, the big things that we need to do, and which means we'll probably have to finance some of this stuff even longer than that, but. Any, Brian, is there some additional things that you?
Well, on the capital side, of course, we had aerators for a hundred thousand and fifty thousand for the next four years, basically the air eight forty-seven ponds. So we're kind of spreading that over time. Your just for wears, I know Ted detected a study. We figured half a million. I, it's the best guess I can do. I know it. It's why I have the true numbers. Reach out to somebody. I mean, you're talking three wears. I talked to Steve and he's like, hey, this is probably a good number. I mean, that'll probably definitely come in lower. I hope so. The big one on here is your master irrigation renovation. We figured three phases, about a million a year. We all know the irrigation out here shot from Gateway and Griffin all the way around. And with more developments, I agree on Mr. Tinkle, that should be phased in or one big thing to kind of cover it all. Your other one, if you're not aware of it, is our streetlight. The original wiring was put in eighty-six. It's aluminum. We're constantly, Bentley's out there every two or three weeks fixing bad spots. The streetlights are nineteen eighty-six. I put in money for streetlights to start replacing with LEDs like down at the Stoneybrook and working our way south, because with the roundabouts going in, the county's putting LEDs in there. But it's killing us from Gateway to Griffin. Those LEDs are constantly, or the streetlights are constantly going out and it's all physical wiring. Wiring's nineteen eighty-six, the aluminum stuff that found at FPN L put in there, it's kind of like the same home run that goes to your house. It's thirty-five years old.
Is this still general fund? Oh, one?
Yeah, we're still in there.
Correct.
I haven't seen the streetlights yet. I'm looking.
Brian, with, with, you know, I know we've talked about having a, a lighting master plan. I don't know, I think, I don't know if that's been completed yet, but, you know, my issue with that is something I think we are going to probably want to address or at least have conversation on it is let's say down Gateway Boulevard, there are streetlights that are in the tree canopy. And either you cut the tree down, you cut the tree back, or you modify the lighting height. And I don't know, Department of Transportation, you know, the requirements around that, but it's almost like there's some areas even down Griffin where maybe even staggering streetlight versus, I don't know what you call the, I don't know if that's just like sidewalk illumination lights or whatever. I don't know if you've thought about.
Well, here, here's the issue with streetlights in general. The county and the state, everybody goes by how many lumens are hitting that road. You're not aware of when the school went in down here, that people were complaining over in Hampton Park because of certain streetlights to them in particular. But that's the proper lumens that's got to hit that road. And when you're, we're in violation up and down Gateway Boulevard, especially between Gateway Greens to Walton Lakes. They're all in a canopy. Taller pole ain't going to do any good. It's going to be blocked even more. It's, the only way to get rid of it is get rid of the trees.
Well, I think my point is not so much even street lighting, even though that's the primary purpose of the, of the lighting, is sidewalks as well. You know, so I, I don't want to get into the conversation today. I was just thinking about it because I was riding past both Griffin and then Gateway Boulevard the other night, and I noticed, depending on which side of street you're on in Griffin, one side is illuminated, the other one's pitch black. And the same thing with, with Gateway Boulevard, where there's areas where there's clear, that, that luminescent cascades, street sidewalk, where that canopy is, or where the canopy covers the streetlight, those sidewalks are pretty dark. Now, I don't know if we want to be in the business of making sure that all the sidewalks are lit at night, but it's just something I think if we're looking at a master plan, we should probably just take a look at that and see if it's something we should be considering or having discussion.
Financing, debt financing. We've got multiple things here in different accounts, different categories. Can we do a catch-all bond that would have them all, or do we have to keep water underwater, irrigation under irrigation, landscaping under landscaping? Can we have a general bond that we go out and let's say is three million that would cover these items that created the majority of the costs that Brian has identified?
I'm glad Stephen's on the phone because you can have multiple project, projects, probably any bond or financing program, but what's the source of the revenue? What's the pledge revenue?
See, I'm not crossing boundaries. I'm keeping oh-one bond, oh-one bond. But there are sections of the oh-one, which would be landscaping, as you just indicated. Can I mix and match everything that's under the same general revenue source, which would be the oh-one?
And does that have to be segmented by capital improvement versus maintenance?
Oh, it has to be capital improvement.
Capital improvement. Yeah, I could see that.
Yeah.
That doesn't bother me. That's easy.
There'd be capital improvement or replacement, and if we're talking about such special assessments, the project could be, you determine what the project is. You can define the project. You can say your
We can have, we can have a Gateway Next project, which would include three or four CIP initiatives in different sub GLs. And that, that's fine.
But we, we can take what
I'm not sure what you mean by sub GLs. Typically
Well, in the oh-one, different categories.
Typically, what you'll see is a project description, and the project will say, this is the
You'll do it.
You know, you say, and then you get opinions of probable, estimates, opinions of probable cost, and you say transportation or whatever category. Then, then you give the dollar number. And then the question is, if it's utilities, you're going to use assessments as, for the pledge revenues versus the enterprise fund, is what you're saying.
Correct. I would go, right now, what I'd envision is for the oh-one, we would have an oh-one, oh-one operating bond and an oh-one capital bond. To save that four million dollars worth of cost and knock it out, and we're limited to five years because of the
Unless you want to validate it in the time, there's a timing issue.
Timing problem there.
No, no, but there's a timing problem issue anyways, because you have to prepare an engineer's report. You have, which outlines the scope of the project and defines the scope of the project.
Any bond?
For the borrowing. Yes.
Yeah, for any bond.
Yeah. And then you're going to have to have an assessment methodology, and whether or not utilize the same one that was utilized before that Russ had, or create a new one. And then you have to hold a requisite public hearings, because it's, it's a debt assessment as opposed to an O and M assessment. And so Stephen, what's your estimate, how long that would take? Probably a ninety-day process?
If you're talking about doing a, a bank loan, five-year type, five-year or less bond, then you'd probably do that in ninety days. If you're going full out and doing a full bond, then yeah, it's going to take more than ninety days for that.
But again, it could be ninety, depending upon the notice.
Yeah.
You're getting the engineer's report, the assessment methodology, the publication, and then having it, it's going to be ninety to a hundred and twenty days. If we're doing a validation, that's six to eight months.
So we, we can't do that, the latter. We haven't got time.
Well, here's the, can, can we do this? Can you, let's say we have three items that we want to have in a much larger project. Let's just call it Gateway Next. Can we put budget consideration or consideration in for the budget for the debt financing? With the contingency that that financing get approved?
You have to, when you, when you adopt your budget, you also have to adopt your assessment rules.
You get to have the money.
Yeah, you can't, yeah, you can't have the budget and not have the assessment roles. Correct, Stephen?
Oh, yeah. No, I mean, you're correct with the statement, but you can certainly put in money for future debt, and I have budgets where people put in money for future loans and they decide against it. So it, it's not like you have to have an assessment role that absolutely ties with including that debt. Now, I will say this, the loan
You do have the assessment, you love you the assessment, correct, or you're saying that you don't?
You would, you would.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, so what would happen is you would basically, if there was financing rigor that, for projects that are going to take place, and that financing rigor wasn't going to be complete by the time that the budget is finalized, you could put in placeholders for that amount, still assess people. And if you don't go through with it, then you'd, then you'd basically have
That's, that's exactly how you do it. Yeah, it's exactly what you do. We go through as if we're going to do it. If it takes ninety days, it takes ninety days. You're not going to go out and spend the money, but you have the money to recover the principal and interest on the debt included in the
That's what I'm saying. We don't have to have this completed by the time we approve the budget, as long as we have a placeholder in for it.
We have to have the math.
Well, but the loving but not the loving of the assessment, though, would not be in place at the time of adoption of the budget, because the budget hearing is about sixty days out.
Yeah.
Okay, it's June, it's August nineteenth. And if it's going to be ninety days to get the borrowing and get the debt service assessment in place, it's going to be after the budget's adopted. Correct, Stephen?
That's correct. Now, the other thing, and we remember we did this when we started the Lake Bank, we got a bridge loan because we knew that the larger, the bond validation was going to take so much longer, but we didn't want to have to wait. So we were able to do that, that bridge loan. I believe at the time it was with Tony, I believe it was with Center State.
Yes, yeah, Center State.
And, and with that, we're, you know, obviously able to budget for it, get it within the ninety days, as well as start the longer-term bond validation, if, if that's what you're looking to do.
Well, I think, yeah, I'm not, I'm not interested in the bond validation. We, that's too much time and expense at this point in time. Bigger project, yes, but this three million, a bank loan with a, the methodology being the one that we currently have in place is, it isn't going to take any time at all.
The only difference in methodology But you would have a water component that you don't have now in the methodology, because that's enterprise fund, if I recall correctly.
I'm, I'm, I'm not to that yet. I'm only on oh-one right now.
Okay.
I think what I'd, I think what I'd like to do
Oh, one's the one that's got everybody all in a tizzy over the dollar value. So the others, we could, we can solve, we can get the problem solved. But oh-one is the one that's resulting in this high cost. What I'd like to see is just contact the bank, find out if we want to borrow three million dollars and then Brian, you have the, what the borrowing would be on the capital for the oh-one related, see what that P and I cost is that we have to throw in, then see what the revised calculation of the impact of the costs are, because you're going to knock the daylights out of it when you take three million bucks out of it.
Well, and what I'd like to do, Stephen, is when you're doing that, I'd like for you to do two scenarios, a three million and a five million. And just to see what the, what the P and I difference would be on those two.
For my understanding, when we're looking at, we're going to call it a gateway next, for lack of a better term. And this would be incorporating expenses that we And this would be incorporating expenses that we see, or waterway management, capital expense. Eration?
Yeah, everything that he announced.
How about the upgraded park system?
It's.
O one, that's, everything's in O.
So that would all be in there.
That's why I said three to five.
That's why, that's where I was coming from.
Yeah.
Yeah, I totally agree, Don, let's go for the bigger amount.
Yes, go for it all.
What, and what I, and what I would suggest is, because from a time, timing perspective, is that, uh, the board authorized Chris and or Brian to work with Tetra Tech for task authorization for the necessary engineer's report, and, and what the scope would be of the project, because that's, I mean, that's.
What are the components?
What are the components, and then what are y'all looking for?
You mean, what are the components of the things that are qualifying for this bond?
Correct, the project, I'll call it, they'll call it the project, you know.
We're talking about ten, fifteen things, I mean, this is, this is, this isn't rocket science.
But if, what if we're, if we're gonna wholesale be changing all the electric from aluminum, something else.
Yeah, yeah, we need a list, we need a, we need a potential list of, of items, and.
And come back to.
I said three and five million, but it, which, because I was thinking a little bit with the, the new parts system in there, but, I mean, well, I think, the new parts is probably gonna be five, seven million on its own, um, so.
But it's a start.
Yeah.
It's a start. And, and then I would suggest that also that Chris engaged Russ Wire to do the assessment report for that. Russ knows the district, and so, I think at least to get the ball rolling, and the timing of it, so that at the next meeting on the seventeenth, hopefully there can be a scope, a project description that the board can say, okay, engineer, go get the project cost.
What I think is our bigger problem is defining what is going to be the line items that's eligible for this loan. To me, one, it's gotta have a design life or service life beyond five years. If it haven't got that, it's sure selling, it's gonna be a, a bond. Second thing is, is that maybe you wanna limit it at fifty or a hundred thousand dollars. Anything over fifty or over a hundred, pick a number, those would qualify, other than that, do them all.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
Do them all. And to see what, see what impact that has, because that's gonna take that eighty-two percent O one, uh, uh, figure, it's significantly lower that down.
Stephen, from the standpoint. Taxpayers aren't gonna appreciate the twenty percent increase.
Taxpayers aren't gonna like what we've done for twenty years.
It's, it's gonna be, you know, not eighty-three, but it's still gonna be shocking. And, and, and Stephen, from the standpoint of the engineer's report, even for interim borrowing, the five-year borrower call, or even if, uh, an interim borrowing with a Center State, correct me if I'm wrong, the banks still like to see a, I'll call it, as definite as you can get, project description, that the project description is, let's say, five thousand linear feet of irrigation lines, uh, one hundred streetlights converted to LED, uh, and you, they wanna see quantities called, no.
You want something that's good, no.
Is that correct, Stephen?
Yeah, they're gonna wanna see as much detail as we can provide, uh, on exactly what needs to be done, and, and to Mr. Tinkles' point, they're gonna wanna see that this has got what the life is of, of what we are doing, you know, for, for the, for this repairs and all the different stuff, so they'll, they'll definitely wanna see some kind of engineer's report. Um, the level of detail will kinda depend upon how much time, uh, they have to put it together, and how much, you know, detail they have.
Well, what I, what I'd like to see by the next meeting, Stephen, is just an initial swag at what you think, at whatever the current percentage rate is, and then Brian will create a shortlist of, of the, of the punch list of, of items, then as we move forward, we can go into more.
I, I know Steve Agapi tomorrow.
Yeah, that's what I would suggest, only because of. Do you think all your notes? No, that, no, that, I, I suggest, it's a good idea, and that, on, in the interim, that Chris be authorized to get Tetra Tech to submit a task authorization, come back to the board with that next week, because every time we lose two or three weeks, this gets pushed out further than ninety days, and it's gonna be.
All right.
That's my concern.
Let's, let's keep moving, hey, uh, Chris, have staff, well, is Laura's not in here? Um, have we accounted for the new, um, because we had talked about even prior to, uh, to your new agreement, going to a four percent structure for, for staff, uh, which is what we have in place, we have, uh, two percent, which is a merit increase annual, and then a two percent, um, uh, performance base, so you could earn up to four percent, but you're almost guaranteed two percent.
In the, the version one, I forgot to update my wording on the bottom, but it, it says three percent, but it is actually four.
Okay, so we've got that already accounted for in this, but.
Yes.
Have we accounted for any additional, um, promotional increases or any additional dollars outside of just?
Or the new position, too.
I, I have one.
It's gonna be in the staffing area, we did that under like the bonus, like the incentives in the second place, but not in the staffing plan.
Is the assistant district manager proposed, that's in there?
I, I had two deals on that, one, a key employee, uh, section, which I would take, maybe our seven layers, or seven, seven layers, seven people that would qualify in the, uh, below the district manager, to managers and assistant managers, however you wanna call that, I estimated seven people, and budgeted fifteen percent of their salary, which is about five hundred thousand, so I would put in the budget an additional seventy-five thousand for that, and then.
But that's for.
That is for.
Market increases.
Potential increases for key staff, that that issue came up when we had the discussions with Chris, that we need to make sure we stay in the ballpark and, uh, in line with the, uh, outside. It can always be changed, but at least it's in the budget.
Can we go over this when we get to that, the fourth item in the agenda, because Stephen will have his.
Well, I thought we were doing the budget, because this has to be.
No, we, we started off with the public works, central funds kind of, uh, we moseyed on down to four D.
Yeah, we kind of skipped.
Okay.
We're not there yet. We're not there yet.
I thought Brian was.
Brian wasn't supposed to talk about any of that.
Thanks, Brian. Okay, so, for, for item, for actual item four A.
It's just no action workshop, and.
That's just our workshop, okay, which we, okay.
And Brian's going to forest the highlighted pages that enumerate, in fact, it'd be nice if you could highlight what you and, uh, Chris and Stephen see as the ones eligible for the bond.
Well, that's what I would wanna see, I just wanna see a list of all your, those called big ticket items, and then of those, which one would be earmarking for potential, you know, consolidation? Yeah, they might be all of them, I don't know.
I'll reach out to him tomorrow when he.
And we're still thinking commercial paper, not in this art, correct?
Correct, yeah, right.
Brian, I just, I just do have a quick question, just on my notes, so the fifty thousand dollars for the mulch, you said that would be the twice a year, you think that's sufficient? Or did you say three?
To, uh, mainscape, Eric says really once a year.
So that fifty thousand covers once or twice?
I put enough to cover twice.
Okay, good.
Be honest with you, he said you really only need it one time.
Which, which is fine, but I, I, the only question I have is because it's bare now, so it's, once is enough, because usually you have some, so you're kinda refreshing, but now it's kind of.
Okay.
Non-existent.
Previous contract, you're getting three of them for like eighty thousand.
Yeah, three, three, I think is mu- too much, two is okay, one is fine, because it's bare now, I would have.
We're gonna wait till October, November, the new budget?
I'm just asking you.
If there's one lever to pull from an aesthetics perspective, that I think is less, less expensive, it's the, it's mulching.
Yeah.
So, I mean, to me, I'd much rather set aside twice a year.
Owners see it and they raise hell, because it's in the covenants of almost every association here, that you'll have a minimum of two inches on your yard.
For some reason, that's one thing that, and then I, the second question I have is, so the tree, okay, the tree replacement program, so seventy-five thousand for the Gateway Boulevard, we're taking in account the ones, the thought ideas, Stony Brook area?
I was told to look into the, well, we took the trees out.
Mm-hmm.
I looked and put the trees back, so I had staff look at it and give me a list of what they thought would go in, where it's not tearing the infrastructure up, bars, roads, sidewalks and all that. It came up with lists for the foxtails, a few other things we put in there, got an estimate, it was like seventy to seventy-five thousand, that's a safe estimate.
Good number.
Cover everything back that we took the trees out, before I do that, remind you, there's three hundred thousand dollars worth of sidewalk damage needs to be fixed first.
But you got that in, you already have the estimates, and that's part of the sidewalk for next year.
Yeah, and I would like for us to, you know, when L, uh, which, whoever staff is, is kinda looking at that, I'd like to have maybe a couple options, whether it's, we're gonna do them every hundred feet like we did the oaks, or we're gonna do them more in, in sections like on, on Griffin, just, I'd like, I'd like to be able to look at.
The expert that was here on the Stony Brook deals said if you're going fox, or going with the foxtails, fifty feet is maximum you wanna go, fifty feet.
Yeah, so I'd just like to look at some options, whether we're gonna stagger them, or if we're gonna do clumpings like we do, which is more in line with, with what we've done on Griffin. Because.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think our time would be better spent discussing or arguing, if you will, the dollar total percent of increase that we're willing to, uh, agree to tonight, and worry about, uh, let the, let the staff worry about how they're gonna make things fit into that total, because we have, I, I don't think we need to be talking about individual projects yet until we know, uh, uh, what, what we're worried, what we're, what we're willing to vote on, because I'm not gonna vote in favor of a hundred percent increase in the budget, okay? I hate to say that, but I'm not going to.
And Bill, I'm not going to vote on a deal that we skip the can down the road any longer. Okay, we got too many things that have to be fixed in this community.
We haven't been taking the can down the road for the last five years, and we've been working our tails off on a lot of things, so don't give me that.
Well, Bill, I find it interesting that.
And we're gonna, we're gonna continue move, to move on, um.
I have one more question, just to make sure, do, do we wanna be proactive, are we gonna be thinking of adding in, in addition to oaks, or whatever trees we're gonna do over there? Are anything else in the roundabout that's gonna be by seven eleven, or any other areas that we think residents are gonna come back to us and ask us for stuff?
I think we do that when those two roundabouts are done, we look at what they've got and bring in a consultant that can look at Gateway then as a package. Right now, we did the injustice up there, and it needed to be done to take those trees out, it's an easy way to fix it. Uh, people, uh, uh, experts are telling you the easy way to fix it, it makes sense what you're proposing to do there, my thing is, go with it.
Okay, so, nothing that we can think of it that we should add it here, because I hate it, because I'm still getting emails, I'm sure y'all.
Yeah.
Do something, we have sixteen dollars, we have sixteen dollars, and what am I gonna do?
We're probably a year or two out from doing anything there, because.
That's it, that's all I have.
Mature, you have to understand traffic flow, the site restrictions.
Yeah.
Well, the other one too, is, I wanna see what this, these two roundabouts look like before I would commit to spending any money, because I think with the combination of the roundabouts, well, you're taking, talking about having to remove some of the canopy trees for the light, I think we're going to get into a, a scenario where we may want an expert to tell us what this is gonna look like, but we may have a chopped up mess.
Yeah. That's it, that's it.
Okay, um, anything else for Brian, so we can continue moving? Pond bank washout repair. Four B.
Yes, originally we had proposal of two POs to have Matt Tower go out and fix some washouts on eight different ponds, correct, eight different ponds. Those total, the two POs totaled, total fourteen thousand nine hundred. L and I met Chris Matt Tower and walked the ponds, he agreed upon a price for each pond. Uh, we have the POs to show you and the quotes for those ponds. We were a little shocked when in from Mark sent it over, that the first one said it'd be in eighteen hundred, it was like nineteen thousand eight hundred. The second one said it'd be in twenty-three hundred, was twenty thousand seven hundred.
Is there a change order requested?
No.
What's the grounds for?
Well, here's where the miscommunication came into play. We asked Chris more than once, is this for the price of the pond, he said yes. Well, then the billing comes in and we had a meeting, apparently Chrissy said it's per washout, which L and I never heard, per washout, we heard total was per the fix, the washout on that pond. The communication in the field was, I found out from the guy doing the work, he had no idea what the quote was for and how much to begin with. So the total, when we got the bill, was forty thousand five hundred dollars instead of forty-one hundred. Needless to say, we are a little shocked. Uh, they did fix twenty washouts on two different ponds, we canceled the other PO because of course we ran out of money, we're taking money from the Valley Gutter Repair to move it over to cover those washouts. I have no other money to cover it, because.
This was done as a unit price contract?
Yes, total price.
If we have, if.
It was done as a total price.
Total price.
We were given a quote to fix a washout on a specific lake, the quote says, we'll repair the washout on Lake Seventy-Eight using the material provided from the dock, our total eighteen hundred dollars.
And, and that contract was approved and signed by the district.
That's how we issued the PO.
But I don't understand.
It doesn't say per washout.
Why did you run? Why do more than? If we only had one, why did he do?
Well, because, we and L ask him, are you sure, he goes, yeah, I can fix it, we point different washouts and they proceed to fix.
So eat, but with the understanding each one of them was gonna cost us eighteen hundred.
He never said that.
All of them eighteen hundred.
On the pond, he said I can fix these for eighteen hundred, we're like, fine, the other one was twenty-three hundred, because we took a tree out.
Why did we get into verbal when we had a contract?
I, I, I was making my question, because, uh, uh, under Florida law, we're not obligated to pay. If we're changing a contract, we hit, under sovereign immunity principles, we're basically changing a contract for scope of work and the cost.
Doesn't sound like we change it, it sounds like they change it.
Yes, but, but, and, and again, if there was a verbal arrangement, that's arguably, we can say, we're not gonna.
We don't, we don't do verbals. I think we just go back to him and take the other ones that we had that had a dollar value that equals to the, the contract, and say, don't go do them and you aren't getting any more money.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
This sounds very familiar, I don't know what vendor, but this happened on eighty-three, is it the same vendor? Is this, it was, I think it was before Brian. Yes.
It was.
Okay, because I, the, the.
I don't know, I don't remember.
And that was before sitting on this board, and I don't know, but I believe the board paid the bigger amount, because I remember the, the, a meeting with the husband and the wife, and, and the wife, the husband had given one price, I don't know what was given to the district in writing, but it was one price, and then it ended up being way more, and it was the same vendor.
It sounds like it's their problem, not ours.
Well, and, but we pay for it, so, so it is our problem when it's coming out of our pocket.
Well, because of what the contract said, but on this one here, of the work that has not been done, that was intended to be done, what's the value?
Well, we had eighteen hundred, twenty-three hundred, total fourteen-nine, so fourteen-nine, forty-one hundred minus that, we got like ten thousand dollars worth, six ponds we didn't get to, we canceled.
So we have six of the eight, we thought all eight were gonna be paid for, for the forty thousand?
No.
For fourteen thousand? Fourteen thousand.
Nine hundred dollars, was for eight ponds to fix the washouts on the ponds, was pretty much to hold him something to do, in the meantime, while fifty-nine was being lowered.
And he did not offer any change order or anything to tell us that it was a deal?
No, sir.
I think he's got a problem.
Yeah, I think he does too. But I think we oughta be looking for somebody else to do work, so we don't get into these things, I mean.
Well, I made it clear.
Get me once, okay.
I made it clear.
You don't get me a third time.
I made it clear, any other quote coming will not be per washout, will not be per truck load, it will be total price, do not exceed.
What are these quotes, how do we get the quote, we just call Joe Blowup, so they give us a quote?
We call their office, what we're handed.
How many quotes, I'm just performing, not the.
We had eight different quotes.
How many, we had eight different quotes?
Eight, seven of them.
And everybody was in the same range?
Yes, seven of them were for eighteen hundred, one of them was for twenty-three hundred.
So that's right there.
I'm asking how many companies bid.
On this?
We should. On any of them?
What is that vendor?
Did you just go to one person?
Let's just stick to this one, how many bids did you get for this same one?
We didn't get any other bids for that.
Okay.
Where's the vendor, who's the vendor?
Matt Tower.
I think we just go to Matt Tower and say, finish the other six ponds, you're not getting any more money.
I agree.
And they better clean up their bidding proposal between husband and wife, or we oughta go somebody else.
Right now, we've only paid them the forty-one hundred dollars.
Wouldn't expect to do.
Tony?
That just doesn't make sense.
We're looking for guidance from you.
Sounds like somebody in there.
Well, the question is, the key is, oh, the case, Supreme Court case, we have a.
We're not going to Supreme Court, Tony, it was short ver.
Let me get my other head.
That's late, later, Bob.
Hello, is there anyone there?
Yes, sir, I'm just reading. Tony's thinking, can you hear it?
No, I'm reading, there's a, for Supreme Court case, I just wanna make sure, because I believe that the additional monies are barred by the document of sovereign immunity, because it was outside the terms, the express contract, and no written change orders were, had been issued, authorizing the extra work, and I think that's the facts of it, I'm sorry?
We issued a PO for the twenty-eight hundred and thirty-five hundred.
So they knew what monies they were working with?
Correct.
But they kept working. The only, the only question we might have is, if there was a sense that there was a. The only question we might have is if there was a sense that there was a verbal authorization, that's where the confusion comes into play and that's why we need to have written agreements in place to make sure there's no confusion.
Well, I guess, when did when did you find out about the cost and the money was gone? Was it after the work was completed?
After the work was done, I got invoice.
Oh, it was after.
After I got the invoices, when and from Mark sent it to us and say, oh, I have one for eighteen hundred, came back nineteen thousand eight hundred. What happened? We're like, whoa, we don't know.
So this was just two out of eight ponds?
Correct. But if we issued a PO, why would anyone spend more than the issued PO?
Real easy because they thought they could get away with it.
Well, if they got away with it once, yeah. Hey, we got you this time.
I would suggest that the board, I mean, I think the board has the ability, in my opinion, you know, to say, we're not gonna pay the extra amount that was not authorized by any written change order or written express contract.
I like that.
I like that.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Hi.
And it won't happen again without a PO. Hard lesson to learn.
Okay, the next item is four C, change in lobby hours and operating opening to the public. This is in here, it's pretty self explanatory. The only thing that I would question about this is if if we're recommending to align with Lee County eight to four thirty, my only issue is giving staff a little more time in the morning.
I changed it, yeah, I changed it to have the lobby be open from nine to four.
Nine to four.
Yeah, and we would have eight to four thirty would be when staff is here and then the lobby be open from nine to four.
Okay, so the modification is.
It says nine to four on here?
It does at the bottom. The new one that came out under recommendations was approving changing office hours, which are currently nine to five, the office hours, to eight to four thirty and then opening the lobby from nine to four.
I'll see you. Thank you.
And that would start next week.
And and staff is actually working eight to five?
They're actually, no, they're gonna work eight to four thirty.
Eight to four thirty.
Because that's what utilities is working eight to four thirty, Parks and Rec is working eight to four thirty, all staff will be working eight to four thirty then.
And that's that's in line with the county?
Yeah, that's in line with the county is. I even attached the page to their website with the hours on it.
Yeah, and as long and we're saying.
And we've always kind of done.
Eight to four thirty, the lobby will be open for people to come in from nine to four.
Which gives us an hour before and a half an hour after.
I'll make a motion, we approve the recommended hours.
Wait a minute, wait, wait, wait. What are the hours that you're recommending, you're motioning?
Yes, Bill, so the the working hours for staff will be from eight to four thirty in line with with the county structure. The lobby.
That that means we're requiring our staff to put in an extra half hour every day?
No, they're currently working eight thirty to five, so I'm just moving it to eight to four thirty.
Currently, this is currently nine to five. You're gonna make them, you're gonna make them work from eight to four thirty, that's a half hour longer than what they're doing now. You're gonna compensate them accordingly?
I think she's saying, Bill, that they they come in later.
They're currently working from eight thirty to five and will be working from eight to four thirty. So they come in at eight thirty, we open the lobby or we start answering phones at nine, so yeah. Well, it's still eight and a half hours instead of eight thirty to five, they'll be working eight to four thirty.
I think the recommendation is a little confusing.
Yeah, we're mixing working hours with lobby hours.
So the the what the motions on the table.
So this lobby, yeah, the office hours are currently nine to five, but staff is working, the admin staff is currently working eight thirty to five and we start answering phones at nine.
Yeah, so the the motion on the table is that the our operating hours are nine to five. Staff will will be operating from eight to four thirty, lobby will be open from nine to four.
Nine to four.
Yeah, that's the motion that's on the table. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
No.
And just to note, Lee County is not open yet, doesn't have any plans.
Yeah, their lobby is not open yet.
And so this takes effect next week.
Okay. All right. We're leading the way.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and so now we're getting into four.
Part B. D like David.
Four D, as in David.
Stephen, and again, depending upon what the board does today, if there need to be any additions to the numbers, then any motion that would be made would be to approve the proposed budget with revisions approved by the board and set the public hearing in the public hearing timeframe of the August nineteenth at six P M. So it's later in the evening to give the public more opportunity to attend.
August nineteenth?
Yes, at six P M.
And I just want to make a quick quick statement to Bill's previous comment that I think we've been very diligent over at least the past five years that that I've been here in trying to keep our budget in single digits, low digits as much as possible. I think we've done a great job over the last five years in prioritizing phasing to minimize significant increases to the assessment. The exercise that we asked staff to do this go around, because what they were doing is under budgeting for critical priority prioritized items. So what we asked staff to do was not to think about backing into a number, back into the solution from a priority perspective. So that is why we have probably larger than normal numbers, but they're real numbers. It's based on on real priorities. Now, I would normally say that even putting out an initial budget with such a large amount is gonna cause tremendous backlash from residents. I mean, when we get into low double digits, there's, you know, there's there's feedback. Normally, my stance would be to to pull that down in this first initial phase. However, this time around, I am not in favor of that. I think we keep the high watermark based on real numbers that staff has put together because I want residents to know what it's gonna cost for us to fix high priority items and if there are significant pushback, and I'm sure we'll still go through a reduction, we'll do our due diligence and prioritize and phase and come up with different financing options, but I need residents to understand the severity, even as diligent as we have been over the past five years, getting things fixed and improving and putting policies, everything that we're doing. I still need the residents to know that there are still significant items that need to be addressed, infrastructure improvements, because I think there's things we have to fix, things we have to create, and there, in my opinion, there there still needs to be items that continue to aesthetically improve our community and and to make this a great place. So that's just my position that I think we'll get to the best that we possibly can at the end, but I need the residents, in my personal opinion, I need them to understand the severity of what needs to be done and how much that's gonna cost.
Couldn't say it any better.
I have to agree.
Mr. Chairman, for Stephen, if you don't mind, if I could take two minutes, I have just some remarks that are very similar.
Okay.
And basically, I would ask the residents to to consider this is a top and mark budget and it's a result of board direction to staff to document those needs and the funding to address those needs. Budgets are work in progress with actual amounts, assessments and finance options to be determined between now and the public hearing, August nineteenth. I say the numbers presented today are more than shocking, shock and awe for a lot of people and I'll explain it. And you do see it, eighty eight percent increase in the single family assessment with this budget. Last year it was four point four percent, eighty two percent in the multifamily, it was five point four percent last year, holding it, like you said, ninety nine percent increase in commercial. This comes from a general fund budget of three point seven million in fiscal twenty twenty one to the proposed six point nine seven million and twenty two. Big ticket items, stormwater repair maintenance, as Brian said, hundred and twenty five thousand to a million dollars and a half a million of that is maintenance, there's dire and they need it. Pipe and catch basin cleaning, four hundred to five hundred thousand, pond bank man maintenance tripled in this budget, seventy seven to two twenty five. Some were things in landscape services, big ticket items in the infrastructure, light pole replacement from ten thousand in our current budget to two hundred thousand and that aluminum wire replacement, we had zero hundred thousand dollars. Maintenance and repair on sidewalks was fifty thou, I mean, it was zero and went to seven hundred and fifty thousand and maintenance and just repair the roadways, fifty thousand to two hundred thousand. You have a commons master recreation facility, a quarter million dollars and something hasn't done before, that aeration on the lakes, a hundred thousand. We budgeted nothing for the antiquated entry features and monuments at the entry to the community. And again, why the large ticket items, infrastructure installed in eighty six has been neglected and properly repaired or replaced, it's all crumbling and there are little reserve funds to address it. And opinion from staff is the community is at a tipping point where the neglect to some of this infrastructure is soon gonna have a negative effect on the community and importantly, housing values. It's gonna take a concentrated effort and heightened expectations of the board, the staff, the vendors and the residents to address these in a meaningful way. The recently inaugurated President's Council with the meeting of the President's Council and the boards become an effective communication conduit for residents' concerns and the recent survey that went out for Parks and Recreation, again, a great conduit for communications. But there's hard decisions ahead. You have a swimming pool that needs a quarter million dollars just to bring it back to what it is, much less enhancing it, and the buildings there also need to be replaced. Oak trees continue to damage roads and sidewalks, expensive price tag to repair. The oaks are a wonderful identity for the community, but that identity has a huge price tag. Sidewalks that are broken and buckled by the roots present a huge liability to the community. Oaks that corrupt the street pavement, block the lights, create a huge liability. And in closing, I think the budget process is an opportunity and it's time for us to move forward as a board, staff and the community to address these issues in a meaningful way. And that's my two minute statement.
That's from you?
Yes.
Very good.
And staff, talking to the staff because it's just things, again, that that we see our job is to protect housing values.
Yes.
And that's what we're trying to do.
I have a couple of things. One back, now's the time to do it since we moved down to four D.
Yeah.
D for discuss, yes.
Make sure it stays in the right plot. Again, I think one of the things that we saw, I saw in that salary or salary review, that employee review, I've heard it, and that is is that I think we need to seriously look at what I call our key employees. That's why I said to reserve fifteen percent of their total salary, which I estimate to be about five hundred thousand as an additional line item in the budget, seventy five thousand.
And let me just say, if you don't mind, just the way that I would address that is it would be a full staff evaluation to look at.
I'm doing two ways. I want a key staff employee, then full staff.
Okay, so the way I would probably, the way I would probably do, position it is a full staff evaluation and then you would do that in tiers, you know, based on your on your levels. And I think that's, I think that's really important and the and the driver behind that, because this is happening all over the all over the country, matter of fact, all over the globe, is that it's a lot of what's called market, market compensation.
Stealing people.
But.
They're stealing.
Well, it's not, it's it's that, but there's also, there's been so much fluctuation in in compensation over the last twelve months, more specifically in the last six, that companies are having to do market analysis to bring their staff up to market market level. So I think that's what you're saying there. And I agree.
Then the second one is, I think the assistant district manager at the eighty level is a little bit on the short side. I would go to ninety. So those are the two additions I would make. Then I've had several people indicate to me, and it's pretty well knowledgeable or it's at least getting knowledgeable right now, we have a real serious problem in Daniels Preserve, an immensely serious problem. Whether it gets to Brian's projection of a million dollars, I hope not. I'm hoping that the information they're gonna collect this weekend will allow it to be a lot less, but it has major exposure and has major exposure in the sense that Timber Creek and Worthington are coming in and their only way to get to the flowway is through our Achilles heel. My question is, Tony, who can we go after to pick up the tab for falsification of documents?
Well, I'd I'd suggest that be a conversation that we have.
In a negative session?
No, you can't, but I I think the standpoint of the budget.
Well, here's the reason.
What I suggest is that engineer, manager, staff, we get together and we make a recommendation to the board, probably the first meeting in July, I won't be here, supposed to be in Alaska then, first meeting in July. You finally, a trip from last year got back a year, but the second meeting in July, have a recommendation to the board as to how to address, we've had some initial thoughts about how to address it and to look for whether or not there is an opportunity because that was not, as I understand, a WCI project, it was Worthington project and then it was the.
Marathon or something.
Well, Meritage and then Daniels Preserve developers both will belly up. So I mean, it's more than just a five minute conversation and we need to go back.
The reason I bring it up is because people need to understand that this this is what's costing you big bucks, big bucks, and they asked me on the street, go after them.
Well, I think that's something the staff could do and come back to the second meeting in July with recommendations, how to address this. We've already had some initial conversations because there are, it's all called permitting opportunities because with the entity that's permitting some other requests coming up shortly, might be the same entity that did the initial permit for this project and did the initial.
Well, the thing I'm trying to sort out is just look at the math. This, if today's a million bucks, we have seven thousand people paying for it because you guys don't pay for it over there. That's about a hundred and thirty bucks by my math. A hundred and thirty alone of that increase that we're talking about is assigned to something that created this mess. I think people need to know that.
But again, but I think that the idea of coming up with possible recommendations to the board as to how to approach it, depending upon the facts that come out, I'd suggest the second meeting in July.
Okay.
As that's as that's being looked at, and it's one thing, okay, I understand the building entity, but the corporation that started it may no longer be in business, but some engineering firm certified.
Engineering firms.
Well, that's part of, it'd be a global.
All of it.
Conversation, recommendations, say, opportunities, no opportunities.
The the thing is, I'm trying to point out, and I think Doug said it a little bit differently, is is that people need to understand nineteen eighty six to today is what's causing this problem. This stuff is reaching its service life. It's reaching it quicker, in my opinion, because for the last twenty years, the expenses that we should have been paying on it didn't get.
Well, that's a whole other topic, but you're absolutely right.
But that's what got us where we're at. So anyway.
Well, generally, yes, but not specifically.
My recommendation would be that for those that seventy five thousand put into the budget extra for the salary or compensation, key key people and bump the assistant district manager from eighty to ninety.
So why don't we, why don't we, Chris, why don't we put in, we can look at the numbers, but if you do a full staff evaluation, it's probably gonna be maybe around a hundred K. That's what I would put in the the budget. Doesn't mean we have to spend all that, but if you're gonna do full staff evaluation in tiers, because in my opinion, we have probably four tiers, you have your your.
That's what I think.
Tier one, which is Chris, which is what I consider, you know, almost VP level, then your tier two is your manager, directors, your tier three is your supervisor, team leads, and your tier four, your specialists and your your general staff. So anyway, then let's do that. Let's put in a hundred K as a as a good placeholder. That'll go nicely along with the the potential of four percent with the two merit and two performance that you're eligible for doesn't guarantee that. And I think that will be a nice incentive for for our employees in good faith, especially on on the piggybacking of of Chris's new arrangement and then the assistant district district manager, that is already in the budget from what I understand.
So we should be. It's in at eighty, I think it needs to be right to ninety.
Well, I think as we go to finalize that, in the next meeting, we'll determine the range, because I agree with you. I think the I think we need to look at that range, but also we may need to make some adaptations to our our tier two, our level two.
Okay, well, my my. Range doesn't mean that you put the top dollar on board.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, my, my, my thought was, though, the reason I brought those numbers up is I understanding between now and next Tuesday, this calculation on page, next time they do this, have, put page numbers, page two, where it shows, what I am assuming we're approving today, Tony, is we're approving the not-to-exceed assessment chart that's on page two of this presentation.
What you will be, we recommend approving the proposed budget as in your budget book was received by y'all yesterday with an additional a hundred thousand dollars under personnel, whatever line item is.
But my point is.
Whenever those numbers turn out, the whole budget will be revised.
But that reflects the rate of which we cannot exceed.
Correct.
Okay.
And we could, we could even bump that, let's just say, we could bump that to a hundred fifty.
What, what's the title of that page?
It's the Fiscal Year 2022 Assessment Chart Summary, it's page two, Gateway Area One and Two.
Okay. Change will be the total expenditures from the general fund, the overall one fund. And that's what, again, that's when the board gets the point to make a motion or adopt the resolution. The resolution should be to adopt, approve, should have approved the proposed budget as presented yesterday, prior to June fifteenth, and that's in the agenda package.
Are they talking to your microphone, please? Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Guy, I turned it off and turned it, I apologize. When it comes time for the board to adopt the resolution to approve the proposed budget for purposes of setting the public hearing, I would suggest that the action be to approve the budget that was received yesterday by the board members that's in your meeting book with any additional amounts. And add, make sure what those specific amounts are and which line item they are. So then Stephen and Chris will go back and make that revised proposed budget. That gets attached to the resolution, that's what goes to Lee County, and that's what goes to City of Fort Myers.
Okay, then so for the record, then I'll make the motion.
I don't know if there are any other discussions on the budget or not.
Yeah, I've got to get that hundred thousand in there.
I think that'll be at the end, I, I, and I suggest that be at the end, I've made a note myself.
I want to make sure it's on the budget. Fifteen K for the Assistant Director to increase that.
I, I wrote down a hundred thousand for discussion purposes.
A hundred for the, the employee review and then fifteen for the.
So it'll be a hundred and fifteen thousand.
As of right now, yeah.
Okay.
I'll start down at your, do you have any, anything else for the budget?
No.
The only, and again, I don't know if I want to throw things on top of this, but we have had some discussion around looking at some type of security for the district. I don't know if that's something that, because we haven't brought it up, you know.
Security.
Yeah, we talked about, is it time for us to maybe look at Gateway Service District having its own security positions, which would also probably require vehicle and other stuff, which I think we might have so much stuff in the budget right now that's probably not the.
Housing.
Well, we, you're either talking about contracting a, a security firm or us. And I think we probably wait maybe till next year, if, if we do move forward with the, with the park area. Because I think once you start doing that, you probably need to have, you know, security, you know, throughout the community. But it is something that I do think.
When they see the budget.
Yeah, right.
I think that's what, that's one, I think once we have something there, a structure, that's one, it will make sense and people will connect. I think right now maybe a little too premature, but I think it's great.
Is there any other items that we haven't, that you haven't seen in the budget that we've talked about that we need to?
There's one other item, but I do not know if it impacts the budget, but I'll bring it up. We have the last time this issue with overtime, P O, P O T.
Oh, the buy, buy down?
Yeah, buy down. We've got another, we were told the whole story, evidently, we have another employee that's in a similar situation. My deal would be to immediately do the same thing with him, buy him down to eighty hours like we did with Chris and get this out of our hair.
That would be this fiscal year.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think we're.
So that was happy part of this budget.
Okay, but I didn't know if that's the time we brought this up or not.
Yeah, and so, and I think, I think that policy is, is under review. I think we need to confirm it moving forward. So I think anything we do now is going to fall into this fiscal buzz. I don't think we need to plan for anything in the future unless.
Yeah, this is just to clean that.
Yeah, no, I think we're fine there.
Okay.
I said nobody and I say yes. The road, I say. The, the only one that we own, this Griffin Soccer Drive, is it in here?
We own five of them.
We, don't we, do we put that in?
I'll have to double check because we had an estimate for forty thousand dollars to repave that road and.
And then there was an additional, how much was the, another forty thousand to do the parking lot?
The parking lots, and I think both parking lots was sixty thousand dollars.
Wait, forty thousand to repave the entire thing?
No.
Oh, I was going to say.
Forty thousand to, to pay from Griffin to the end of, to our entryway. Oh, our entryway, so not all the way down to the dog park.
Correct. And.
Forty, forty thousand?
No way.
Well, that, that was an estimate by Net, by Ness because the substructure is compromised in there.
So we got it, we got an issue there, because just to resurface, mill and resurface, no way.
No way, that's way too low.
But if you've got substructure, that's.
You, you see the holes and things out there.
So let's think about it for a second, because I think what needs to be done
Needs to be.
is from Griffin to the dog park.
Yeah, because mobilization alone.
Also, if we're doing that, we might as well do the two parking lots while we're at it. So that's about a hundred and fifty.
I agree with all of that, but it's not in the budget.
So you would, I want to add it because like to this point.
That's where I thought she was going.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're going to add another, what?
I'd say.
Hundred thousand?
I said a hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty, hundred and fifty thousand for resurfacing and repair of, what is it called that?
I would call it driveway, basically, it's a long.
It's got a, it's got a rope name on it.
What is the, what's the name of that, that's right?
Soccer drive.
Soccer drive, yeah.
Soccer drive and the parking lots.
Yeah.
Because that is pitiful.
Do you know the length of it? Because I mean, we just did it in Magnolia and it was just, and, and we single-handedly did Daniels and it was almost seventy thousand, and we did, and we did four minor repairs, nowhere near there.
I think we put in that placeholder, a hundred fifty, that should.
Yeah.
Buffer. So right now, I've, I've got a hundred fifty for that, a hundred fifty for the market salary increases, and then fifteen for the, the Assistant District Manager range, even though.
So we're talking two sixty-five total additional?
No, we're talking about three, three fifteen. One fifty for the employee potential market.
One fifty.
A hundred fifty for the, the road payment, and then the fifteen for the Assistant District Manager.
Three fifteen. Okay, three fifteen.
Stephen, did you get that? Did you get that, Steve?
Okay, we'll make sure, Chris, can you just make sure that we follow with?
And the categories, Chris knows the categories.
Yeah.
So do, are we ready for a motion?
Fifteen, so three hundred.
I want to, I want to circle back with Bill and I want to circle back with Bob. Flav, did you have anything else? Okay, Bob, anything? Okay, Mr. Guy, any additional items that, for discussion around the budget?
To the contrary, I think, I think we've got a budget that's way too high.
Yeah. Well, this is, this is our starting point.
Pardon?
This would be our starting point. We've thrown it, we've thrown everything that can just get to sync at, so. So if there's nothing, no additions from you then, sir?
None additions for me.
Before we vote, again, I just, I want to, I was thinking about this too. I, I want to make sure that, again, the items that are in this budget, most of these are not net new to us. It's items that we've been talking about for the past couple of years. However, other priorities have come up, and that's what we budgeted for. I think staff has done a good job of, of prolonging some of the, some of these critical components through, and some of those are phased books, phased approach. So you had to, let's say, you, you had to video, you had to clean before you understood what's broken and so on and so forth. So I don't, I don't like when we use the phrase, it came down the road, we talk about what we've done over the past five years. So I don't think that has been our philosophy. But these, most of these items are what we have known, and it's just now hitting the planning cycle. And unfortunately, some of these things are hitting a priority at the same time, which is inflating where we're at. So do I have a?
Mr. Chairman, based upon the fact that there have been this discussion about the additional amounts, we have a number of members of the public participating, may just want to ask if they have any comments they want to provide.
Any comments from the public? You want to come up?
We said Judy P. from Cypress Point. You said the meeting for the public would be in August. How soon will we get a copy of this?
This should be available on the website.
After they're corrected?
Yeah, probably by early next week, I would imagine.
Yeah, I would suggest as soon as it's transmitted to Lee County and the City of Fort Myers, that the resolution, the proposed budget be posted on the website.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments from those participating virtually through the GoToMeeting? If so, just put a comment, just put your name in the comment. Do you have anything, Chris?
No, I requested that they had any comments to make.
So the, the amount that was in version one, what was that?
I would just suggest that easiest would be to approve Resolution 2021-10, adopting a proposed budget that was previously provided to the board prior to June fifteenth with the additional amount of three hundred fifteen thousand dollars in expenditures in the line items that the board discussed, and that the document be revised and attached to the resolution and set the public hearing for August nineteenth at twenty twenty-one at six P M.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, four to one, noted.
Mr. Chairman, before we get to the next topic, I guess I should have done it under the, my attorney's report, I sent, I sent out to the board, I should have done some of their attorney's report, sent out to the board, the revised district manager agreement, the revised job description. And I believe I captured everything that the board had discussed and agreed upon. I just want to make sure, and so I have it ready for the chair's signature.
I checked the one you sent out versus the one that I annotated at the last meeting, and you get them all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right. And so the board, I know, approved it three to two. And so, again, I have the document, it was just, I'll call it the scrivener's part, and so it's ready for the chair's signature and that of Mr. Shoemakers. And what I did, again, as I mentioned in my email, I put in Mr. Shoemaker's home address in there. But the public, if the public makes a public records request, that gets redacted per Florida statutes. There's an exemption from public records release for that kind of information.
Okay. Meet your windows won't get soaked.
Okay, moving on, any items to pull for consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda five, A, B, and C?
I'll remove.
Have a motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Bye.
Any opposed? Okay, future board business, that's normally covered under District Manager Report, you.
You know, coming up, we have a couple of minor things that may turn major. You know, we're working with the Summit Cable Company coming in, and we made a request to be included under, under their insurance certificate and have a couple of meetings with them. And so far, I have not gotten a formal response, will continue to bother them. And we did have a meeting with the Worthington Group this morning. They're looking at five hundred and fifty apartments to put on that property. And they were looking at Connections Water Sewer, and we brought up issues with stormwater and other things they haven't addressed. And a big thing is July first, we'll be bringing the rate study and connection fee study forward for the board adoption. And, I mean, board consideration.
For then publishing the necessary rule amendments, if necessary.
Correct, and it'll have the.
Your public hearings.
The connection fee information and public hearing, and we're going to try to run that parallel with the public hearings for the budget.
Yeah, for the record, then it was five seventy-six.
Anyway, with regards to that aspect, I don't think it affects the district this year. If there are an increase proposed for connection fees, that legislation was signed by the governor, June fourth, that capped the amount of increase of impact fees, it's called, that can be made during a two-year period or any period of time. And in the Florida law, the impact connection fees qualifies as impact fees, but I don't think it'll affect the district based upon.
It, it shouldn't.
The numbers, well, we'll see when we get the report.
Yeah, we're asking for additional money for connection fees to cover the P and I for the, those capital projects that we had in the budget and where our fee is right now. We, we couldn't really bring it up on that fifty percent threshold.
About twenty-five percent.
I think we'll be in good shape.
Okay, good. By the way, part of the genesis, people wonder what, what's the genesis of that? There were some counties around the state or end or cities that hadn't increased their impact fees in eight, ten or more years. And then the, those local governments decided to play catch-up, and one had an eighty percent increase, one had a hundred forty percent increase in some impact fees. And so that got the year of the legislature from the developers lobbyists, and voila, that's what happened.
Sounds like our budget.
I was getting ready to say the same thing.
Maybe next year there'll be some state legislation.
All right, is that it, Chris, from you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Oh, and Chris, did you ever tell the board we got the money from Comcast?
I don't know, I didn't mention that. We did prevail over Comcast for the eighty-two hundred dollars for the damage Mr. Tinkle witnessed when they were over there.
And I've heard all about it. I, I recommend we put that in crypto and see where it. See, see if we can make a little money back.
Six months.
Yeah. Supervisor guy, supervisor comments from you, sir?
I have no more, no further comments, thank you.
Bob, anything from you?
Just with respect to the new multi-family complex that they're building on the west side of Tree Line.
Yes, sir.
Has there had been any impact on us yet?
Well, not yet, we just got the plans in. Yesterday, they brought them over with the videotapes, the storm drains, because those are running over Tree Line into the Pelican system. And a copy of, Tony got his today, and Stephen Agapi got his today, and they've been clearing the land out there.
Oh, no, they've been doing a lot of cleaning. Stephen, I know it's way too late to even comment on this, but they're bordering Colonial Boulevard. I'm not quite sure the rationale of sending the water east when it was so much shorter to go west.
The pipe was already there, wasn't it?
Yep. Pipe were underground, Tree Line from that site, they were stubbed out over there.
Good question, I don't know why they did that either.
I mean, that's going all around your elbow to hit your butt, but.
Yep.
Okay, but there's no other impact on us, fire impact fees, all that. And who's responsible for the pond when it's built?
Well, the pond is going to be ours. The, all the drainage structures and pertinences and et cetera will belong to the homeowners association because like many of the developments in Pelican, their easements are too small and their pipes are too small to qualify for the permit criteria manual. So they will all stay in the ownership, but the pond will have the easement and be, belong to the G S C D D.
G S C D D, that's the magic word, thank you.
And I will subject them to a waterway assessment.
Absolutely.
Yeah, right now, it just, it says, this is a draft of the plat that would dedicate to the district, all like maintenance easements with the ability, but not the obligation of maintenance.
Ability to what?
Maintain.
Oh, oh, oh.
They've got nice aerators in the pond.
It's basically, it's basically like a backup opportunity because the association will have the responsibility for maintenance. But it provides the ability, but not the obligation.
Let's just make sure that the bills and all for the electric generation all goes to their HOA, not over here.
And we'll be checking the bathymetrics like at Arborwood for the depth of ponds.
Yeah.
That's all I.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
Yeah, I, I got three quickies. First one, have we had any update or status from our ATM firm on, they were supposed to get back in, I thought, twenty-one days, and it's been more than twenty-one on their phase one findings.
I would have to check with Brian, I do not know.
Yeah, I would hope at the next meeting we have the phase one, in fact, possibly the phase one and phase two report. Next one, phase two ponds, did they get out and reevaluate, or I should say, phase three ponds? Did they get out and reevaluate the ponds that were on the next list? Because I brought up at the last meeting, several needed to be changed, and staff brought up today one that was not on the list, in fact, I think it was Daniels Preserve. That one, we might want to hold off on until we find out what else has to be done there. But my question is, did staff and Bob, did you guys get out and do the ponds yet?
We tried, we're doing, it's currently scheduled for Wednesday, Wednesday morning, nine A M.
I'll take the easy ones and go to the hardwood. I haven't heard anything for a while. Where do we stand on our M R E T A's?
About a week and a half or so ago, I received a document, I've not yet reviewed it, I'm going to look at it, review it with Chris, and then.
Okay, then you go back to us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because just to that point, we haven't talked about any budgeting.
I know.
In great detail on meters and our direction there. So if that's the case, there will almost be a year of moratorium on any, any activity there other than business issue.
Unless we take other actions.
Unless we take.
And you have, you have.
Unplanned.
Unplanned other actions.
Yeah, you have two years to finish paying off that bond and about two years of the warranty left. So planning time will commence.
Full of all kinds of good information today.
Okay, that's, we'll, we need to keep an eye on that.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good, that's a good eye to pull on.
And then the last one, I got in the middle of this one. When did we change the pool hours? I've got people telling, and we, we had meetings about this. I thought that our understanding was that we were going to follow Lee County, and Lee County's deal was thirty minutes before, thirty minutes after, or whatever, on sunrise, sunset. Well, then all of a sudden, I guess about three, four weeks ago, a sign went up and said, no, we're not doing that anymore. Pool won't open till seven thirty, period. I don't recall ever having that discussion.
I'll find out.
I have an issue with this on so many levels.
Getting out of hand.
You know, I almost feel like, you know, again, if I almost feel like we should just, because staff gets to the facility at what time? What time does staff?
They start working about six o'clock to just check the water quality and pull the vacuum.
Understand why we can't open that up at seven o'clock for those that want to come in. It's, it's only going to be two or three people.
I totally agree.
At the most. And I, I've talked with Brian and, and others, and I know that there's, there may be some things going on, but it's not, you know, I just, I feel like during the summer, it's just, if, if staff's going to be there, just open the pool up at seven o'clock, let people swim.
I totally agree.
And, you know, but that's my personal opinion. If, if we need to address it from a board perspective, then let's look at maybe talking about it at the next meeting.
I thought we had and then all of a sudden I found
I'm not even a big fan of this thirty minutes. It's too difficult. I would much rather open it at seven. If we get, if we get slapped on the wrist, we get slapped on the wrist.
I totally agree.
You know, on that point. So can you just talk with Brian and see if we can, if it's feasible, open up thirty minutes? If someone's swimming, say, hey, look, just know that I'm gonna be vacuuming while you're swimming or whatever. If you, if we're gonna, if we're gonna make concessions to open it up for a couple of people to come in and swim in the morning, then they have to make concessions to know that we've got maintenance on the pool. If they're willing to do that, then that's fine. If the first time they complain about it, then we go back to seven thirty and, and it is what it is.
You're right, it's two or three people.
It is two or three people, yeah. Which is probably half of the usage from, from eight to twelve o'clock.
Yeah, I have nothing else.
Okay. Flavia?
Oh, you, you took care of ponds revaluation. Uh, in regards to the trees, there's, so here's a question, I guess, how are we gonna make this happen? So we have no money to tree trimming, right, right now? So there's some trees on, on corner of Griffin and eighty-two that they're touching the power lines.
Griffin and eighty-two?
Doesn't F P L do that?
F P L usually does it if it's touchable.
You up at school?
Hampton, no, Hampton.
Oh.
The ones that were, that I, we got the quote seventy-eight hundred dollars, but somehow we don't have the money for it.
We should.
Yeah, it, it's our trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
F P L will trim them on the, on their lines.
Uh, but that's the one that the, our vendor said that they shouldn't be trimmed because if we trim them, they're gonna be unsafe, actually has to be removed. So it's
If we trim them, what?
It, it's one, it's one particular tree that it has been trimmed so many times that it only has two branches like this. So if you, the one that's touching the F P L, if you trim it, it's, it's gonna be unsaving, it's gonna fall into the Hampton Park property.
Unstable.
So it needs to be removed.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah, so, so, so that, um, and I don't think they know. Um, I don't know, were you, I don't know if Brian made you aware of it or if, or if Jim made you aware of it that the tree trimming that started taking place on Pine Crest about the old MOT fiasco again?
I didn't, I'm not aware of that.
Okay, so
What are we talking about, Pine Crest?
Uh, so I guess we, we started doing some tree trimming on the Pine Crest community.
Yeah, they were hanging over.
Oh, that was the fifteen-foot clearance deal?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we just had to do at our
So
So no MOT.
Oh, so it's not like it was enfrashed, the whole thing on, on, by Stony Brook. So I got a call from a resident saying that she couldn't get into the community because not only there were no signs, they were trimming both sides of the road at the same time, the tree branches are falling on the road. So here I go, take my car, go over there, it's exactly that. So we paid for it, because, and so here's another thing that I, it's in the contract, it's their responsibility. They should be paying for, for that permit. We split the cost and they still didn't do it.
So they just didn't follow the contract?
So, so
Find another contract.
I, I don't get it. And, and then the answer I got, well, they were supposed to be there under sixteen and they went in, they went in a little earlier.
Somebody's staff should have been over there checking them and told them, hey, you don't do this.
So that's what I did. I told Jim, I said, I need you to come from the office, I need you to come here right now because both sides of the, and they're trimming both sides of the road, they can't pass it, there's no nothing, the signs.
Did he come out?
Did he come and take care of it?
I don't know, I was there for fifteen minutes.
Is this the second time that we've had that same?
Within, within a few months?
And it's done tree removal and it's the same vendor?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know, but this was bad.
Should know what our standard is.
Let's, let's staff get into it and get into
But I just wanna ask some, if you can have a follow-up with Brian to follow up with Jim, because I, I think it's the next tree trimming after the big fiasco, at least somebody should have been there.
Be called.
So we'll let, Chris will
If staff goes out there and checks them, then just tell them one time, you don't do that stuff.
Right.
You don't come back.
Yeah.
And I, I did have a comment, I talked to a resident the other day about the trees and I said, well, how'd they come out? He goes, they look real nice. He goes, but those people sure are defensive. And we didn't go beyond that, but I guess I, I know why.
Bobby, what else you got?
Um, and I had asked also landscaping to con, uh, Jim to contact, uh, F P L in regards to the area between Stony Brook and probably by Next Level Church. A ton of Brazilian pepper that invading our landscaping area and it's making really difficult for the vendor to maintain those beds. And I, I asked him to copy on the email so I can have some type of follow-up and he's been a while.
What is, what's causing the problem?
Uh, Brazilian peppers that usually, yeah, usually is no, uh, no charge, but instead of having our vendor waste our time, let them do it, it's their property.
Now, maybe, be simple, we'll have to see if that's theirs.
Could be W C I's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could send them along.
Whoever it is. That's it.
That's, that's Stony Brook and Next Level?
Yeah, the whole area.
Is that it for you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I just had three quick ones. So it looks like we're gonna shoot for the next president's council meeting in July. Um, and that meeting will be focused on budget. So it will give us a great opportunity to get in front of the president's council, hit our budget, talk about our philosophy on the budget.
Yeah, do we have a proposed date?
We, we're working on it. Laura is, is trying to pin that, pin that down, but I just wanna give you guys a heads up. As soon as she pins it down, she'll let us know, but we're shooting for July. And the primary focus, if not the sole focus, will be budget.
When's, when's the Amazon delivery come? It's our, that's our flat jackets is what we're ordering.
Yeah.
Well, we'll put up one of those.
Plexiglass. Plexiglass. We'll need to budget that. Uh, the other thing is, I just wanna make sure that we had talked about the golf course, um, water use, permit, whatever, and there was gonna be some additional discussions. I don't need to get into it, but is that?
Well, that's settled. We aren't, we aren't gonna come up with a fee schedule for them and Tony was, uh, we're just finishing up the, uh, use agreement because the water management district asked us about that last week also.
And we don't need to get into, I was just wanna make sure that we're including all the, all the responsible parties, that we're having some open conversations so we can collaborate, uh, on that piece. Um, I did have someone reach out from one of the, well, I can be direct. Um, so there is the road, uh, uh, what are they called? The, the road legal golf carts, the, um,
L S Vs.
L S Vs, uh, definitely becoming more popular. Especially there's, I think there's two or three now in Stony Brook, which Stony Brook prohibits golf use, golf cart usage. So now, you know, and, and I
They're all club members, because that's where they're coming from, I know.
Well, and they're, so it's starting to gain some momentum. So I did have someone ask me if the district had a golf cart policy. I am not aware of one, but I did say that I think we've had, had some communities who adopted.
We just did one, we just did it. Like a preserve has one.
Can you, can you send yours to Tony? Can you send, uh, Gateway Greens to Chris? And Chris, can you distribute that to, to the board? Uh, just so we can take a look at it.
Now, keep in mind, there's two major differences. His is public roads, I'm private roads.
Right.
So Big, big, big difference.
We're a combination of public, private, but we only wrote the policy for the public.
Very well defined.
Four-wheel, high-speed bears in twenty, not greater than twenty-five, they want the registered title with insurance.
And that's, that's well documented and I'm, I'm not worried about those. Um, I think the, where the conversation has come up is not just because of these vehicles becoming more popular, but as some communities may be looking at whether or not they're, whether it's, they're gonna restrict the golf carts or not, because I, I feel like there's, this has been
Both. Ours, ours is one deal for both, golf carts slash L S V.
I think we need to have a conversation about both, but the low-speed vehicles, I think the, the regulations are pretty specific.
Oh, they're very specific.
So I'm not worried about that, but I think our policy needs to include all, well, first let me back up, I'm not saying we even need to have a policy, but I think it's something that we should discuss at some point, maybe we need to have a workshop.
We don't have a road of, of which to have a policy, except for our four side road.
Right, but where, where we're, what I'm talking about is just golf cart use, period. On sidewalks, on, and
That's a Lee County, I would suggest, the sidewalks on the county road.
And they're not sidewalks either. That's right.
Right, so
People need to understand those are not
The reason why I'm asking is just, some communities are gonna be reaching out to us for guidance, because they want their policy to umbrella, uh, ours. And if we don't have one, then they're probably gonna say, why don't we have one?
So we can't legislate, legislate that.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Then, then maybe what we need is, what is the, what is Lee County statutes around use, golf cart use on, in their ride, in their ease?
What Lee County's policy? I don't know, I guess we have to ask transportation of Lee County.
Well, we're, we're opening a can of worms that we talked about and we tried to avoid it. The issue is that the country club has a lot of people, over a hundred and thirty, we have a hundred and thirty carts registered. You don't register and you have a little silver bullet on your windshield, you don't get in anymore. If you're an owner, it's a hundred dollars. Every time you're caught driving it on the road, a hundred bucks. We went through the attorney, rode all
They don't have to be.
These are both either golf carts or L S Vs.
But they have to be registered.
But those are on
Have to be registered.
For Gateway Greens.
And in Gateway Greens, there's no fee to registration, but there is a requirement that you have to either name the association as an additional insurer or provide the additional, some of the insurance companies have a name for it, that basically say we as all state guarantee you that we will notify you if they drop their insurance.
Because that's, and I love that aspect, that if you have a golf cart, it needs to be registered with the district.
No fees. Our problem is, so get, get back to it.
I wouldn't even mind having
Is we've got Stony Brook, we've got Hampton Park, we've got Timber Ridge, and I think there's two in Daniel's Preserve that are driving golf carts and L S Vs.
Well, Stony Brook is prohibited. You cannot have golf carts in Stony Brook.
I've got three members that are good friends that live in Stony Brook and they all have golf carts.
Well
Unless they're parking them out there underneath the trees and leaving them overnight.
I'm just saying
Current, they're not legal.
They're not, they're not allowed to have, now, if you can, if you have a, a street legal, you, they can't prohibit.
Yeah, our problem we ran into is what do you do about them driving on the county road? And my deal is, I can't touch it. It's, I, I don't have dog in that fight. Because here's what's going on. Go down to the Gateway Boulevard Deli any night of the week and especially Monday night. You'd think it's a golf cart manufacturer down there. They all drive down for happy hour, which is not a good sign. Drive down for happy hour, then they get on their carts and thank God, they follow the, the paths back.
And they drive on happy.
They have
Well, because the paths are still
Okay, I just, I didn't wanna get into a whole big conversation.
Thing for Tony, because Tony, you said you just got the, the specs or the plans or something.
It's in the statute.
For the community across from Pelican, the new one they're building?
Yeah.
Right, you just got something for that? The Tree Line?
Okay, the C five residence.
That is supposed to be by D R I, a multimodal golf path up to the Windexy Shopping Center. I wanna make sure when you're reviewing that, that you look for that.
Okay.
And if it's not, then please let me know, or send me the docs and I'll look.
Doug.
I'm making notes on the plans right now.
We are private, we created, we adopted one two years ago.
Yeah, we have one.
So we made it similar to his.
And they're supposed to put one over there.
And we adopted and we just had a homeowner, we just, five thousand dollar fine on golf carts.
It's supposed to run
We just paid you.
From the traffic light, it's all reserved, all the way up.
Yeah. Well, I got it. Uh, let's send them to Chris and have Chris send
Well, okay, I guess, I guess the key point is the district only owns little side streets and some little segments.
Four, four side streets.
Griffin, Commerce Lakes at one segment, uh, the round, Gateway Boulevard.
Right out here.
So I guess, if I'm hearing you correctly, we don't need a policy because there's nothing within our
State statute regulates that.
Okay.
Indian County
I would like to see
Then you don't need, but we'll do so for
Yeah, that would be nice. Um, could
You have something to share, Chris?
Well, if, if you're interested
Yeah, it didn't look good.
Well, it, it isn't. Kenny went out, but they, they were doing the startup on the lift station for Arborwood today and had a couple of issues and the force main between Arborwood and Pastoya, something's in it. And they brought pumps out and tried to move it back and forth and checked impellers and can't get it out.
Somebody's blocking?
Yeah, we're gonna have to dig it up. It's, it's all new, it's, it's, there's no
Three years?
There's no customers on it yet, so that's
But I was wondering if it was some infrastructure they put in a long time ago.
No, this is all new stuff. So they're, they're, Lennar's very curious too, but they're gonna have to dig it up and cut it. And I said, well, make sure we have a camera and, you know, whatever comes out of it.
Have, we, we haven't videoed it yet?
No, well, they can't get that far down.
Oh, you can't get that low?
It's also, it's a force main.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, so they're, they're gonna go in and cut it.
Alright, so I'm gonna call, um, this continued meeting adjourned at four forty-four.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Praise the Lord.